Testing one, two, three, testing.
Either I'm not hearing very well, or... Barely.
Testing one, two, oop, that's definitely...
That's good.
Testing one, two, three. Alright folks, we'll get started here in about three minutes or so. I want to make sure that we make best use of everyone's time, but we'll give another three minutes. Alright folks, we're gonna go ahead and get the town hall started. First, I wanted to thank all of you for coming out. I know everyone's always got a lot going on, so for you to spend a little bit of time coming out and learning a little bit more about this development and to take the opportunity to get your questions answered, we really definitely appreciate it. In case there's anybody out there that I haven't met yet, my name is Bobby Warren. I have the privilege to serve as the mayor of the city of Jersey Village. We have with us our city council. If you were at the last town hall that happened in December, the format will be pretty much the same, pretty similar. For those who weren't here, this is very much an open format. We're gonna just very briefly kind of remind everyone kind of where we are. If you already are kind of familiar with it, it'll just be kind of a very brief summary. For those who maybe don't know, I will apologize if it's bereft of some details. We wanted to maximize as much the time that people had to be able to ask questions and to express concerns. In addition, I'm also, one of my goals tonight is I want to, as much as possible, be the facilitator of the discussion and leave it to my colleagues on city council to chime in as much as possible. So unless someone specifically has a question directed to me, or unless there's something that I really am compelled to chime in on, I'm gonna try to give my colleagues as much an opportunity to respond to those questions as much as possible. Just to give you kind of a very brief summary of how we got here. For those who know the history of what has been called Jersey Crossing, that area has kind of been a focal point for development for the city for some time now, since I think 2010, maybe even before that. Originally, it was, the idea was because Metro had declared at some point that there was a possibility that they were going to develop commuter rail, the city initially looked at that area as a possible candidate for transit-oriented development. Of course, that didn't come to be. The city, in anticipation of that, passed some form-used land use codes. Basically, we're all used to the zoning we have around here that's based on districts and based on uses. The zoning that the city council at that time put over there was intended to try to shape the development in a little bit more specific manner. Unfortunately, the owners of the land at that time believe that that development or that new code severely diminished the value of their property. So there was a dispute, they filed a lawsuit. Long story short, we ultimately came to an agreement by which the city would agree to purchase that land. And the city, or at least we had options to purchase the land, but we ultimately used those options to purchase the land and purchased about 43 acres for 8.25 million. Not that we've had an appraisal done lately, but everybody in real estate that we've talked to about those 43 acres tells us now, based on the escalation in prices for real estate, that it's worth quite a bit more than 8.25 million. However, we still wanted to pursue development over there in a manner that was consistent with the comprehensive plan, that provided what we've heard from so many citizens that they've wanted, which is family-friendly, entertainment, dining options, retail, things of that nature. And so, there really isn't a whole lot of land left in this city that is available for a development of that type. In fact, there's not a lot of land out there of that size, of a contiguous nature, that's available this close to Houston to do that. And so, we've had a lot of discussions with different developers, and ultimately, we heard from a developer by the name of KHJR, who expressed interest in doing a multi-use development over there. There have been some very brief illustrations that are available on the city website, if you want to see some of the very early ideas. But one of the parts of that development that eventually came to the forefront was the possibility to have a independent baseball team as a primary tenant for a stadium. A stadium that would not be just for baseball, but could be used for any number of sports. So the idea would be to have something that could be used for a number of purposes throughout the year, but that an independent baseball team would be the primary tenant. We did hear, back months ago, from, I believe, and I want to make sure that I get this right, it's the American Association of Professional Baseball, which is one of the bigger independent baseball leagues out there. They are a Major League Baseball partner league, so they're not part of the official minor league system, but they are a partner independently with Major League Baseball. They expressed interest in expanding into Texas, and they believe that Jersey Village was a prime candidate for one of those expansion teams. I think they're looking at four expansion teams in Texas. Four to six, so that's still being looked at. So, we, you know, as a city council, we decided that it would be a good idea to pursue this idea, to look at it. We conducted a study to see if it would be a feasible idea. The study came back with some very strong indications that it would, in fact, be very economically feasible, gave us a general sense of what the economics would look like. And we decided that, as we got through this discussion, and we got to a point where we had enough information to be able to bring this to the citizens and start to really have some conversations with them, that it would be a good idea to hold some town halls. So we held one last month, this is the second of those town halls. It's certainly not the end of the conversation. We would definitely encourage anyone out there, if you're here to just listen, but maybe you're not, you know, you don't necessarily have any questions now, or maybe you're not a question that you want to ask in front of a bunch of other people, totally understand. Everybody's got a different way of kind of gathering their information. I would encourage you, if you don't speak tonight, but you still have questions, definitely reach out to your city council members and ask those questions, and we'll be able to talk to you and answer as much as we can, whatever questions you may have. So with that, that's pretty much the summary that I wanted to give ahead of time. I wanted to leave as much opportunity as we could for folks to ask questions. So, the only things I would ask, just very general rules, we want to try to keep the questions as brief as possible, definitely no more than about 90 seconds. I understand sometimes questions have a little, you may need to give us a little bit of background or a little bit of context, which I understand, but what we want to avoid is this is not an opportunity to get up there and to use this as your soapbox. We really want this to be a process where everyone gets ample opportunity to ask their questions and to get them answered. So, just, you know, be respectful of everyone's time, the fact that everyone took time out of their evening to come out here tonight, and I think if we just follow that general rule, then I think it'll be a pretty good process. We got good positive feedback overall from the last one. The mic is open, we just, we basically, however you want to do it, if you want to line up...
I think it might be helpful if you spent a couple more minutes just saying where the current status is. He gave great history.
Oh, you mean as far as where we are right now?
Right now.
That's a good point. So, let's talk generally about the development, and we'll specifically talk about the baseball stadium at this point. We do, we have a non-binding letter of intent with KHJR. They are the master developer for this project. And when I say "non-binding," it means we have something on paper that we were able to file publicly. That was a priority when we went into this, because we wanted to get something on the public record as quickly as we could, so that we could begin to have conversations with people about it. Up until that point, we were only discussing things in executive session, because we were still working out the details, but once we had that letter of intent, we were able to start talking about it. So, if you go to the city website, you can see the current letter of intent, and it has, like I said, kind of a general set of conditions or parameters that we're working with. We are currently negotiating a master development agreement. That would basically kind of set out the whole details as far as what the developer's going to do, what sort of investment they're going to make, and the incentives that the city would potentially provide. The actual binding incentives would be part of a separate agreement. But we are, we're getting close to having an agreement, a master development agreement, in place. As far as the stadium, there have been, we've been working with the American Association of Professional Baseball. They have introduced us to a number of different potential ownership groups that we've been talking to. It's been a very positive process in that regard, and once we kind of get to the point where we have a group that has been identified as the potential owners, we'll be able to identify them. But that's, I think, generally where we are. Was there anyone on council that had any additional details they wanted to add to that, as far as where we are now, in case I missed anything? And I'm sure there'll be, if people are wondering kind of certain parts of that, that can be something we discuss throughout the course of the town hall. Anything else I'm missing, housekeeping-wise, before we open it up to questions?
There's a lot of different owners. It might be good to go through who owns the stadium, who owns the property. We're selling a lot of this KHJR. Who's gonna own the city hall, the stadium, the team?
Sure. So, this is, I'm basing this off of our current letter of intent. The idea would be that the land would all be sold to KHJR for the price that we paid for it. That's part of the incentive package, recognizing that it is worth more now than it was when we bought it. The, as far as the stadium, KHJR or an entity that they control would own it, but that the city would lease it from that group. Again, this is sort of where we are now. That could change a little bit here and there as we go through the process. And then, of course, the city would lease the stadium to a team. So, that's, generally, I assume that's kind of the details, James, that you wanted made clear. So, but again, we can discuss any additional details or coloring in the lines there that you guys need. We'd be happy to discuss that in more detail. Anything else that y'all feel like needs to be filled in before we start? Okay. I think that's good enough for now. We can, like I said, this is all intended to be more of a dialogue, so y'all can feel free, kind of what we did last time was that people kind of lined up when they wanted to ask questions, and the reason we just did that was just so it was easier, instead of me trying to keep track of who raised their hand last, or whatever. It's just as you come up there, we can go ahead and start taking questions. Mike, if you want to go ahead and kick us off, that'd be great.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Bliss, everyone. So, I am divided. At first, I was really gung-ho, really in support of this whole concept, because honestly, any way that municipal or other government revenue can be made without it being regressive, you know, non-residential, you know, not residential taxation psychs me out, because it's the whole concept of taking what belongs to somebody else. This, if it could make the city money, you know, if it could, if it could, you know, help grow the city revenue and maybe take some of the burden off of residential taxation like that, you know, maybe there's a way. I've always thought that that area could be a good tool to do that with, some non-regressive, non-residential taxation, non-residential municipal revenue. On the flip side, then I got to thinking, you know, we do live on the bayou, and the county stopped their bayou widening or repair work, and they promised to start it again. We played this game, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say his name, because it angers me, Jack Kegel. He promised and promised and promised, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna widen the bayou, widen the bayou. Then Tom Ramsey took over, I realize he's new, and I realize this is an outside issue. My, our concern, our family's concern, is the water runoff. If there's, when there's development and there's parking lots, where is that water gonna be routed? Is it gonna be routed down White Oak Bayou? I don't know how it would be over there if the head of White Oak Bayou's over there. We're just worried about water runoff.
Thank you, Mike.
Maybe there's a plan. I had a friend who told me, "I missed the first one," and there was discussion about that I had heard in the first one, but I missed that.
Sure. So Mike, what your question is, is you're concerned about more development means more runoff. What are we going to do to ensure that that doesn't increase the amount of water going into the bayou?
Yes, yes.
So, thanks, Mike. So, council wants to talk about that?
So, flood is a concern of everybody here. I think we've all seen budgets, we've prioritized flooding as a city. This project, being on the other side of 290 off Jones, the runoff goes into the E-127, which does go down White Oak Bayou. Anytime you build, you're required to provide retention, and there are calculations based on rain and how the water goes in and out, and you have to provide retention, and all of that has to be approved by the Harris County Flood Control District, which, if the Dog Park is any example, there is no way the city can get any favors done, and that they're gonna make sure that we don't offset more water. It all has to be equally done, based on the same standards of any other building, and there will be retention provided here.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna add that, because we do have a major stake by owning the land and being able to sell it and have a, I think, this is one area where the public ownership has, is a net positive for the city, because if we sold it off to, you know, 10 years ago, or six years ago, and did not buy the land, it would go off, it would be paved. They would still be set with county and regulations, but I think ideally, we go above and beyond what's the bare minimum regulations, and you would not get that guarantee with anyone else, and you'd get plain concrete paved over everywhere, and, you know, flooding wouldn't be their top consideration. It would be, how can I profit the most off this land? So...
Yeah, I just, I think to piggyback off of what Drew said, the fact that we are involved in the project gives some additional reassurances that we can, as part of how we structure this agreement and all of that, we can make extra sure that things are going to be done right. It's, this is certainly going to be a development that would be a lot less likely to cause serious issues with flooding compared to, like others alluded to, you know, if it were simply more car dealership lots, or warehouses, or things of that nature, which, those were exactly the sorts of purposes that the prior owners had in mind. So, this will be, you know, development was going to come there eventually, one way or another, at least this way, we can make sure that it's done right. Yes?
You talk about incentives. We're selling the land for what we bought it for. You know, I understand we will give tax incentives, but cutting the value of that property, I'm just assuming in half, I mean, or 50%, you know, it seems like a lot of that money that we could be making by just selling it individually, that seems like a lot of money given to the developer, because I believe they're not going to use all the property that we're, well, they're gonna use it, but they're gonna sell off portions of it, I'm sure, at market value. So, it seems like their return is a lot more than ours. So if you could just kind of explain thought processes, research you've done, because this seems like excessive incentives compared to what I've heard of before.
I'll try to comment on that. Many of us have been doing our own due diligence to make sure that this is, you know, a viable option for us. When we were doing the due diligence and talking to other real estate companies, developers, the path of least resistance, what most developers and most real estate companies want to use that land for, is light industrial. So, the most profitable for those companies is to build tilt-wall warehouses on that. As a part of the comprehensive plan that the citizens had input into, requested and asked that we do something around what Bobby mentioned earlier, family-friendly, retail, something that would help re-characterize that area from light industrial to something that we would all like to see more so, like a town hall, town center type of area. This gives us an opportunity to do that. If we start to build out these types of facilities, whether it's a baseball park, retail, multifamily, which will add residential into that space, the hope and the desire is that the remainder of that land that's in that general area will start to shift and change, and we will start to see redevelopment of something other than light industrial, and it will re-characterize that space into something that's more palatable than tilt-wall warehouses are, or car lots, car dealerships. So that's the general idea of, because this developer has come to us with that idea, and this is a way for us to kind of push that agenda more so than just making money.
What you're saying is, because we're doing this, we're discounting the value of the land, or what it could be worth if we went to a whole?
So for those who may not have been able to hear, so the question is, are we, so the idea is we're discounting the value of the land, we're basically, by selling it for what we bought it for, instead of trying to pursue whatever the fair market value is now. Yes, that is part of the incentive, and that was part of the total calculation that went into sort of the total incentive package. In other words, we're not sharing as much in sales tax, and we're not sharing any property tax, primarily because of the fact that that additional incentive exists. James, did you have something?
Something I learned really early on in this process is that land has a different value depending on what you're allowed to do with it. Because this is a zoned city, the property over there could be valued anywhere from $10 a square foot to $16 a square foot. I think some of those may be lower than $10. $16 a square foot is what it would take to say that we're cutting it in half, and at $16 a square foot, it has to be apartments. That's what, that's what you can get the most amount of money for land in Houston is right now, is to build apartments. And I don't think anybody wants to see 43 acres of apartments over there.
No, 43 acres.
No, there's not. There are apartments over there, yes, but not the whole thing. And so that was something I learned along the way, is that it depends on what you're gonna use the property is, sets that price, and it is, it's part of the incentive package to do it. We also have to remember, if we looked at light industrial or some of the other uses, the amount of tax revenue that we would get from the project was dramatically reduced, and that this is an investment in the long term, and it produces a much higher tax base on the long term, instead of a short-term goal.
And that was one of the other reasons why an HEB or a box store was not feasible, because of the lack of rooftops and the lack of residential in that area, because there's, all of these companies have their own calculations that they, they have to give them the feasibility of whether or not their businesses would be successful, and that residential component is a significant component of that calculation. So, that was another reason why.
And just so folks know, we are also live streaming this and recording it. We want to make sure that we don't give people kind of a one-sided type deal. So, I would ask, if you have questions, please do come up to the mic, but the, just to, I know that they, so just to give kind of a general question that was asked was, we're talking about, well, the highest, you know, if you're talking about, well, you could squeeze the most money out of, from the land, it's going to be multifamily, it's going to be apartments. I think there's also an important distinction here, though, and I think virtually everyone here, I think, can agree with this. Certainly, anyone who has lived in apartments, which I would imagine probably be a lot of us, maybe not recently, but probably at some point in your life, when you were in college, or maybe right after college, or whatever the case may be, you probably lived in apartments before you had a home, a single-family home. And we probably all know that there's a big difference between one apartment complex versus another, and that the quality and the amount they're charging for rent usually is going to make a big difference between whether or not you have a significant amount of crime or less crime. Now, I'm not gonna stand up here and try to pretend like a multifamily's going to be exactly like single-family homes, but... But, as others have mentioned, it is a critical element for development in that area. So you could sell it out on the open market and it could be developed into multifamily homes. Multifamily homes by themselves over there probably is not going to be a big draw. They're probably going to have to rent out at a lower level and it probably would not be great for the city. On the other hand, if you have a baseball stadium, if you have retail right there as part of a multi-use development, then the amount of rent you can charge for that area is going to be significantly higher than it would be virtually anywhere else in the area. And so that, I think, is going to at least provide some guard against what I'm, what are completely legitimate concerns, which are if you have multifamily, there tends to be a higher propensity on average, all other things being equal, for there to be crime and other issues. We totally understand, we totally get that, and that's one of the things we're really trying to guard against. So, and we think that that is a way to do it. I mean, the alternative of just selling on the open market, as, as some people have argued we should do, doesn't solve that at all. In fact, it makes it much greater of a chance that it turns into a bigger issue. So either that or it turns into warehouses. So, you know, I'm, I'm, we are all ears about alternative ideas. One of the reasons we wanted to have this town hall is because we're not going to pretend that we have all the answers. Now, I mean, it is something that we've been discussing quite a bit longer, but we, we want to make sure that we get as much input as possible because if there are alternative ways of looking at this, then that's, those are things we want to hear. But, but hopefully that at least kind of gives you at least a sense of kind of our thought process, thought process in this and why we think it's, it mitigates some of those concerns. Anyone else have thoughts on the, on the multifamily aspect? But I will say this, I just, one thought, other thought I did have was going back to the question of value of the land and selling it for what we paid for it and how that now is a, a discount. I'll tell you this, that's a breath of fresh air compared to everyone who's, not everyone, but a vocal group of folks who when we first agreed to buy the land said, you'll never sell it for that amount, it can't possibly be worth that much. I mean, I, I, I would much rather have the situation where we're having a discussion about why are we selling it for, for the same thing we paid it for, paid for it when it's worth quite a bit more. But, you know, we're, we're using that as part of the incentive and I think it's a very effective part of the incentive, worked to our favor certainly. So yes, sir. Sorry for the wait, folks. We're, we're trying not to have people stand for too terribly long, but that was a very important discussion.
All right. I live on St. Hillier Street. I don't, I fail to understand the attraction of a baseball stadium. I fail to understand the logic in selling the land at greatly reduced price. Why don't you lease the land? The remark was made, we don't want any more apartments. That's true. We didn't want the apartments on the other side of Jones Road, but council elected to let people build apartments over there. I've lived here 40 years. I've never seen an, an attempt to establish more single dwelling residential areas. If you look at our, our map, our global maps, the residence is like, what, 25% of our total area? Not a hell of a lot more. Why don't we develop that over there for single residential high dollar housing? But again, I, I fail to understand the logic of selling the land at a reduced land.
Sure.
I'll take a look at leasing it and retaining the usage of land in perpetuity.
Okay. Council want to, anyone have thoughts on that? I'll just tell you what, and again, I'm, I'm not in real estate, don't think anyone on council is, so we, we are obviously, we're talking with people who that's their profession and so take that for what it's worth. I'm just going to tell you kind of what, what we've heard and not just from one group. We're talking about anyone we talked to about the land that are completely independent of one another. Retail typically, obviously retail strives to try to bring in foot traffic, right? You know, the more people you have coming through, walking by, walking in, walking out, that, that's, that's your bread and butter. The more people you can get in the area where you're going to have retail, the better. There are some areas where you can build retail and people will just come because it's already in an area where people are moving about. There are some areas where you don't, you know, you could build, build retail there, but maybe people, people are not going to go out of their way to go to retail in that area. It just varies. And so in those areas where maybe retail is not a natural fit, there are ways in which it can be developed to try to generate that foot traffic. And that's by adding features or adding businesses or whatever the case may be, adding something over there that will generate the foot traffic on its own that then the retail nearby could generate. One way, of course, is the baseball stadium. We've, if anyone, just as, as an example, if anyone remembers the area in downtown where Minute Maid Park, you know, is now, if anyone remembers what it looked like in the 90s, it looks a heck of a lot different now than it did then. I'm not saying that this is Minute Maid Park, I'm just saying, just talking about a stadium in the context that it's in. This is sort of a miniature, much more miniature version of that. That's also the rationale for the multifamily housing. Put it, multifamily housing over there, that's something that people are going to come and lease, but it's, it kind of goes back and forth between the retail potentially driving some of the multifamily housing, but also the multifamily housing making the retail over there more attractive. So, this is at least our understanding of, of how real estate experts typically look at it.
One, one last thing about the leasing the land and that's, I will admit, that's an idea I had not considered, but my first instinct about is that when the city owns or any governmental entity owns property, it does not generate property tax value. And, and this second is, you know, that's, that's pretty much the first instinct that comes to mind. I'll probably think of a second.
And there's, there's very, you know, my goal is to get rid of the land, sell the land. And so it doesn't work with a lease. I agree, Drew, I didn't think of that idea. I don't know that one would be interested in, it would have to be a 30-year lease.
Or longer, much longer. Yeah.
Yeah, or, or longer.
Yeah.
I think the better move is to sell the land and get it out, out of city ownership.
But I mean, it's an interesting idea. I think, I think I covered all of the, I want to just make sure I did cover all of your question or did we? I think, okay.
And there was a lot of noise over the 30 years, you know, that's not my idea to be 30 years. It's that no one is going to lease that land from the city and build a building on it unless they can ensure they're going to have access to that land for that long. You're not going to be able to do a five-year lease, a 10-year lease. No one's going to invest millions of dollars to build a building unless they have a very long lease.
Yeah, they're typically, when you lease land, it's usually like a 99-year lease, something like that. It's, it's, it's a, but, but that's, those are, those are, if we were to pursue that route, that could be then a discussion we would have. So, it's certainly not, it's not off the table, that's for sure, but, but that would have to be a discussion with, with our partners on this to figure out how, how that would work out. Mark?
My name's Mark Malloy and the first question or what I'm going to talk about here is that you ended up having a consultant do a study for $75,000 to try to determine the viability of the city considering getting a baseball team to locate here and build a stadium. And from that information that was created from that consultant group, it came out to be that the stadium was going to cost between $27 million and $33 million. So you're sitting there saying that they're going to invest that amount of money in that area in that, to build a stadium and then the city's going to lease it back from the people that spent the money to build it. Okay. So the next thing I want to talk about, which has something to do with this, is that just within the last several years ago, the city decided to take and ask the citizens of Jersey Village if they wanted to do away with their five, half percent sales tax for property tax relief fund. And so what the city decided to do was put that on a ballot and ask the citizens, okay, do you, the citizens of Jersey Village, want to create a fire and emergency services district? And so, but, the other part of that was that you would abolish your half cent sales tax for property tax relief. And so the citizens voted to approve abolishing their sales tax for property tax relief to allow the city to allow the fire department to have that half cent sales tax as money to be spent for the fire department, but.
And Mark, I don't want to.
No, no.
I just want to make sure we're, we're well past 90 seconds. I just want to see if we can get to your.
Okay, we're getting ready to get there. So then what ends up happening is now that money is being directed to the fire and emergency services district. And yet you are now taking and talking about at the last budget meetings before you approve the budget for this current budget, is that you might have to consider increasing the tax rate to cover the cost of additional firemen even though you had the citizens vote to approve to abolish their half cent sales tax for property tax relief. So what I'm trying to say is, you know, you don't have the money right now to cover these additional firefighters and yet you want to spend a whole bunch of money on the other side of 290.
Okay, thank you, Mark. And folks, I'll remind you again, we really, to be respectful of each other's time, let's all follow the rules we've established, 90 seconds. If you have multiple questions, please do get back in line. And I understand that sometimes you have to provide a little bit of historical context. I think most of us were familiar with that, but, you know, please keep it as brief as possible out of respect to everyone else. So if council wants to respond to those concerns? I mean, I'm not sure, I mean, we could make anything about the stadium if we said, you're not spending money on XYZ, you can't afford XYZ, how can you do the stadium, but. I will say this, let me just, I, I'm going to make this very brief. I'll make it less than 90 seconds. The average single family, and I've said this many a times, the average single family property tax bill from the city, I'm not talking about your whole property tax bill, the average property tax bill for a single family home in the city today is less. And I'm not talking about in inflation adjusted dollars, I'm talking about actual dollars today than it was five years ago. That's a fact. I've got all the math to back it up. Anyone wants it? Give me a call, shoot me an email, I'll share it with you. But that is a fact. And so to talk about you have to raise taxes to hire six additional firefighters, well, that's clearly not true. It's less today than it was along, than it was five years ago when we didn't have those six firefighters, but they're on the job today doing a great job. And part of that is thanks to the fact that we have the fire control prevention district. And if we bring more economic development in, that'll help even more because half cent of every dollar spent will go towards our fire department. Half cent will go towards the police department. That was the whole point.
Bobby, if I may.
Yeah.
Something I do want to say, and not just to Mark, but to everybody, one of the, I'll be really upfront, I am very torn on this whole concept. I am. I, I personally, I, I, part of me thinks it's absolutely amazing and the other part of me thinks it's really high risk for a city such of our size. And I don't think either one of those comments are off-base with a lot of people. But I will say this, as far as the fire and police cost association with this and what it does to us long-term, I think one thing that is important to remember is that no matter what is built over there, whether it is a car lot, a dog shelter, or a baseball stadium, or whatever it may be, we're going to have to have police and fire department, fire for it. So that needs to be an accepted cost, use, whatever you want to call it, that's going to have to go with it hand in hand, no matter what gets built there. So while I understand, and I do, like I'm saying, I have reservations about a lot of this stuff, that is not one of my concerns. I mean, that, it, it's, like, it's a concern, it's always going to be an added expense, but that area is going to require more, it's going to require more patrol and it's going to require more fire support. And, you know, that's what Jersey Village is famous for and we're going to continue to do that. So, you know, that's just going to have to be what it is if we're choosing to develop or choosing to sell the land or if that land chooses to develop on the other side.
And just to, to direct, try to directly answer your, your question, Mark. One, if we were to lease the stadium from whoever builds it, we're releasing it at the same cost to, we're subleasing it, I guess is the right term, to the baseball team and operator of the stadium. So the city would not have that stake. Regarding the six firefighters, we had to employ them, we had, we were just getting to a point, as everyone, we've preached for years, we're not getting the volunteer levels. So we had to go out and hire those people. I'm grateful we're able to do so at a limited increase in cost because, because of grants and other, other items and we've been able, and the sales tax. So it, it makes sure that we have to mind our Ps and Qs budget-wise going forward because we know we have this expense, but it's not an expense we had until this past year when we decided for the safety of everyone involved that was the right thing to do.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I want to elaborate on Singleton's comments about the flood, flooding over there. I've lived on Delosia for 32 years directly across from the channel. We got four inches of rain the other night. Four inches in a short period of time. I've lived there and I've seen 10 inches of rain and the bough never went up as far as it went up with four inches. We have no control off the runoff off of 290. When I first moved here, 290 stopped at Senate. There was no feeders, there was no freeway. And that channel has, the only thing that's been in, that has been improved on that channel is that spillway on the other side of Senate. Nothing else. They haven't widened it, they haven't deepened it, they haven't done nothing to it. Now, this is at a four-inch rain. Now you develop that across the highway and see what, what's going to happen. No matter what kind of retention you have, at four inches versus 10 inches, we've not had this issue. But we're, we've had it ever since 290 was completed. At one time, that thing never got over halfway full. For years it would never get, in a heavy rain, it would not get half-full. And now we're cresting the top. So, and then another thing I got to say, Singleton says the control, the traffic control's no problem. I was coming home tonight, right around 6:30 and there was a train going across there. Traffic was backed up to CVS, okay? Now you get a baseball game going over there and I know they can come around the other side, but you, you know, what are you going to do? Police department, fire department, ain't nobody can move when you got traffic like that. Because it's going to be, it's, it's going to be bad. Because that's just a train. Think about, what would you say, how many people in a stadium?
It's 4,000.
4,000.
So you got another, let's say additional 1,200 cars, you know? So that's what we're looking at on the traffic version of it, but I'm really concerned about the water runoff and, you know, the, and another thing, I want more comment, and that's about the development of apartments. You do not want apartments over there, we did not want apartments on Jones Road. And I'll give you a prime example of that, go to Spring Branch. And you'll see what happened to Spring Branch. Spring Branch was probably next to River Oaks at one time and see what it is today. Now it's in redevelopment mode, but go down Gessner, go down Law Point, tell me what happened over there. In other words, you're enticing crime into our neighborhood plus traffic. So, something y'all should consider. Thank you.
So James, since you were specifically cited, I'll let you start first.
That storm brought 3.4 inches in less than two hours? There's no flood mitigation anywhere made?
I think it was less than 30 minutes. Did you, did you actually pull up the exact numbers? It was a lot at.
No, I don't have it. I know it was more than.
An hour and 20 minutes.
Yeah. An hour and 20 minutes, three point, there's no flood mitigation anywhere made to hold There meets a, a cost, and I don't know how many inches per minute they do for bayous and, that's way outside of my expertise, but it's not made for that.
I think it's also important to note, we're in the midst of a project with the county to widen that, that tributary. So that's another important point to make as well. So, we're actually what, close, we're almost done with the design phase, right?
We're about halfway through the design phase at this point.
Okay, okay. So we're talking about within the next year, we'll be breaking ground on that, so. Anyone else have any other comments on that? But, I mean, here's the thing, I- But, I mean, here's the thing, just to say, I agree about the fact that regardless of the 10 inches, the four inches, whatever, I think we all agree that development as it has happened over the last 30, 40 years, as it happened in the past, has definitely contributed to a lot of problems with flooding. No one is disputing that. The evidence is absolutely obvious. What that however doesn't account for is the fact that the rules regarding development have changed dramatically within just even the last 10 years. It's a completely different ballgame. Developers used to get around it by making sure that they broke up these pieces of land into small amounts that got below the threshold required for detention. This doesn't do that. You know, we clearly have to follow the rules regarding detention. We're not allowed to put any more water into the bayou than already goes in there. So we just have to make sure that it's done right. The good news is, if we just let a private developer over there, all we would have would be the general just regulatory power that we have, or relying on the county to exercise. In this case, we're actually directly involved. And I think that helps it a lot.
I also want to mention, we just finished the Wall Street project, and we got that incredible rainfall in such an hour and 20 minutes. Only two feet of water ended up in the vault, it wasn't even enough to turn the Wall Street pump on. The bayou was able to handle all of that. That's all their flood mitigation projects we've completed, and there wasn't enough rain to activate the pump.
Yep. Ashley?
My are kind of like A, B, C, like I need an answer to continue. So, sorry.
Make sure you speak into the mic if you need to lower it, sorry.
Okay. So I guess with Drew's comment.
Did it get turned off, or am I just? Okay, sorry, it just sounds really.
Oh, sorry. So with Drew's comment that you're leasing for the same price, why are we the middleman? Why can't the developer just lease to the owner? So that's my first, like, why?
You want me to go ahead and answer it, and then you?
Then I got to finish, yeah.
Okay. So, and again, I'm no tax expert, but our understanding is that it substantially lowers the cost because of the way in which it affects the way it's taxed for property value.
So does that then make us responsible for all of the upgrades, the improvements, the maintenance, and everything that goes in with being the, like, the leaser of the property?
We haven't yet started negotiating a lease.
So is that something you would do then, to make us responsible for all that, or would that be a pass-through to the owner of the team?
My goal is to get the owner of the team, the people who are operating the stadium, to get them to take care of as much of it as possible.
Who's going to be the owner of the team?
We don't know yet. We're having discussions.
So when is your decision needed to decide if this is happening?
I don't know if we, you mean, as far as, which decision are you referring?
Like, when's D-Day? When are you signing that this is, we're going with this, no matter what the citizens say?
I don't think there's a firm date. I think that's all up to the parties. It's, as long as everyone is willing to continue to discuss, then that, then...
So a month ago, you said six months, and you came back and said, oh, I misspoke, and it was two months. So we're a month into that, so are we a month out of that, then, Austin?
I think we're all hoping that we can have something in February for some agreements and that type of stuff.
And that's why I said the deadline for what, because there is no single what in this. There's a lot of things. So when will we have a master development agreement, which may or may not, keep in mind, we're also in the middle of discussions regarding how to make this as flexible as possible. We want to get agreements on things we definitely have an agreement on that is firm, but there are also some things that are still up in the air, such as the stadium. We're working on ways to continue the discussion on that while having a master development agreement in place. So it's not all one date, everything is set in stone, and that's it. There's going to be a lot of moving parts still.
So when you get the person in charge of the people who are going to be playing in the stadium, will we have another town hall meeting with all parties involved so they can come up and answer all of our decisions before you vote?
That's up to council. We can, I'm happy to have as many town halls as...
I mean, I think that's very fair.
Yeah, I'm happy to have as many town halls as people want to have. I'm personally holding my own town hall in a month, so there will at least be that. Another three months later, there'll be another town hall.
I mean, with the parties involved that are going to be the ones affecting all of our lives, I mean, they should be here to be able to speak to our concerns.
I hope they wouldn't be affecting all of our lives, I mean.
Well, I mean, it is. So I think Michelle said last time that the number of people at the stadium are no different than a high school. Well, I don't know how many of you live around the high school traffic, I live around the high school traffic, and I have to avoid my normal roads if I want to do anything in the morning, because it's a pain because of that influx. And if that's going to be every night, I mean, that affects all of us.
I don't think it'll be every night.
And I think it was Chief Riggs in my email that said he doesn't think they'll come through on Lakeview. I don't agree, because I think people will cut through the neighborhood, I think it's going to be a pain to everybody that lives on the main streets, you know?
I think you bring up, those are all very important points. We also need to, what I don't want us to get into the rut of here is the belief that all of these are insurmountable problems, that we cannot possibly work around. But if you're going to ask me for solutions to all of these problems right now, I can't give those.
Well, no, I'm just, you know, like, A plus B equals C down the line.
So again, I want to hold you to the same rules as everyone else, I want to keep it, so...
A lot shorter than a lot of people.
Trust me, there's plenty of time, but just as far as looking at, I mean, we kind of already talked about timeframe. Do you all want to talk about traffic, or anything you want to add to what I mentioned?
And my understanding is the master development agreement and such was being negotiated, and that we were probably going to be voting on that this month, next month, and so your hard commitment is that master development agreement.
Well, but again, as I, and I apologize, not everyone is in the loop on all of the discussions on this part, and actually, I don't, I don't know how much of that's public. There are pieces that can potentially be pulled out that allow, give us time to continue to discuss while we get some of the things that are fairly firm in place. We'll probably have an executive session soon to discuss it. We probably, I wish we'd thought about it beforehand to have it tonight, just to kind of get everyone on the same page. But it's a thing that is in motion that is still, like I, I'm not kidding when I say that these are things that are being discussed, that they are moving pieces everywhere. We don't want to put ourselves in a situation where we are agreeing on things when there are still a lot of questions left open. We don't yet have an ownership team selected. We've got a number of groups that are interested, that are very solid groups. We have, until we have identified a candidate for potential ownership of the team, we can't even really begin to have negotiations on a lease. A lot of these questions regarding traffic, regarding, all of these things are going to hinge on that. But we are, as part of the discussions regarding the master development agreement, are ensuring that we will have the flexibility that we need to continue those discussions without locking us into 100% you're going to build a stadium, period. That's part of an ongoing discussion, so.
And I'll just say that we're not at the point of all of those nitty-gritty details, but that's the purpose of this town hall, is to get your input of things that you do have concerns about, so that we can make sure as those details are developed, we make sure that those concerns are addressed. So we do appreciate you coming and voicing those concerns, because that gives us information to go back and continue our due diligence, and also make sure that those types of things are addressed as a part of the more detailed plans.
Okay. Mark?
Hi, I'm Mark Zaler. I came to Jersey Village in 1990, and this city council, mayor, and city manager, and your predecessors have put Jersey Village in an absolutely great position. To control this property puts us in a great position. But the thing that I urge you to keep in mind is the most valuable asset Jersey Village has. It's low crime rate, it's safe. I watch kids, babies walking around neighborhoods, and it is a godsend. And I say this because it is very important to whatever we do, we maximize protection of that asset and don't minimize it. When we came to Houston, we lived in Inwood North. And at the time, it was great. It was family-friendly, block parties, everything else. Then alongside of us, the developer sold the idea, high-quality, top-notch, Harrell Farb apartments. They had fireplaces, they were luxury apartments. They were going to enhance the neighborhood. Now, I note that the feasibility study, correct me if I'm wrong, ignored the last few years of data and the economic downturn because of the pandemic. We may not have a pandemic any more, but ignoring, and you could make arguments why that's valid, but ignoring that also presents a risk. Because it's in those economic downturns that threaten the longevity of projects. We had that in Inwood North. That housing became low-income housing. The crime rate grew. I can remember my car was stolen out of my driveway, and I'm not just inadvertently putting it on apartments, I searched and found my car in the apartments, took out the battery so they couldn't steal it again till morning, went back, they put another battery in and stole it a second time. The crime rate jumped, the stores began to close and get boarded up, the graffiti on the walls, and it ruined that neighborhood. It ruined it. Now, the apartments that have come up here, and when I, originally I thought the project back when it was, was going to be condos where people had ownership interests. But the more and more you use apartments, thinking they're luxury apartments, ignoring what happens in the downturn, using a flood, a study that ignores it, I think you put the place at risk. And there's some false level of confidence, even if our feasibility study had problems, well, the developer's going to do a feasibility study and spend millions of dollars. But just like in the Harrell Farb, millions of dollars were spent, his economic thing is, it just has to survive long enough for me to flip it. I'll get my money within a few years. We have to be concerned about the whole longevity of the project. So what have we thought about how we minimize that? Is that intergo in giving us a fail-safe option of what if that happens? And if the stadium doesn't work out, do we end up with a white elephant, like they're still trying to feel what to do with the Astrodome? And so now look at that, and that crime doesn't stay there, it goes over where the money is, where the assets are. I have another...
And Mark, and I apologize, I just want to make sure that we're holding everyone to the same standard.
No, no, I'm going to hold my next question to a secondary.
So there's a lot to unpack there, but it's a lot of very good information, so I don't know if, want to start down here?
I just wanted to say about the apartment situation, that was a lot of dominoes to get to a part where it was low-income housing with, you know, graffiti and, you know, boarded-up things. I would, I know our city, we're very proactive. The minute it started, it would start to turn or crime rate. We have all of the things, just like we had for the hotel, we created these different tiers, and if it wasn't met, then we had to, like, so there's ways that we can prevent it from getting all the way to, you know, Z down here. But also in that same breath, having those heads in beds, the rooftops, is just necessary for development. It is, I would like to say we could have just the most amazing stores and restaurants and everything over there, and they would do it without, I mean, I'm not the person who is a developer, but it's just one of the things that is part of their package, and that's just standard industry. What I can tell you is, I went and visited stadiums that are very similar to this side. Austin went and visited some stadiums that are very similar to this side in this type of facility, and we have seen it work in the same type of way. So it's not exactly the same as the Astrodome, it's not exactly the same, but I have seen the ripple effect of what traffic was like, what the homes were like around there, what the restaurants were like. I want to control what goes over there the most I'm able to. I want to keep it as luxury as possible, and I know that's just a promise. But with different, you know, negotiations that we do in the lease or in the stipulations, I don't know exact terminology that I'm trying to think of, but we can kind of curve what it does look like over there. I want nice restaurants, I want nice stores, because then that's going to attract a different type of establishment. And when you, I don't know, if you just sell to the lowest bidder, you're just not going to get that. You're just, you're just not going to get that.
I... I'll just say from, you know, the rest standpoint of building a stadium and not having a baseball team to fill that stadium, there is a significant influx in the past few years of youth sports organizations and club sports. My son attends Houston Christian Academy, and they've had a number of clubs come to them wanting to lease those facilities, to use them for their practices and for their games and for tournaments. So I think there is a viable option. It's a risk mitigation that, you know, that stadium would then be utilized by youth sports, adult sports, and multipurpose. It wouldn't necessarily have to be baseball, it could be lacrosse, it could be field hockey, it could be something, you know, along those lines. So we have thought about the what-ifs, and we still think that it's, you know, something that is viable and feasible to keep leased and operating.
I would probably say amen to the most part. I've said it a couple of times, unfortunately, I don't think developers agree. There's no such thing as luxury apartments. I think they all go downhill, and they're, I'm not a fan at all of them being there. The only ones I see succeed are ownership interest. You've seen that work in the Woodlands, seen it work in Town Lake. There are some 500, 600, 700,000-dollar townhomes that have done very well that I think you could do here. I've yet to find a developer that would even have a conversation to do that. Both with this developer and the others I've contacted on my own, they won't even talk about it. They all want to do upscale luxury apartments, which will be nice for a couple of years, but we all know what happens afterwards.
I will say that, by the way, Mark, the example you used, where was that?
Inwood North.
Inwood North, that's over near...
It's north of, I have one going way up.
So City of Houston?
City of Houston. No, it's not City of Houston.
Oh, it's not City of Houston?
It's out, we went there because it was as close in-town as we could get and not be in the City of Houston.
So unincorporated Harris County.
It's in the city now, right? That area is all the City of Houston now, right? It wasn't at that time, it is now.
I don't know if it's incorporated, I just don't know. But they, initially, they kind of went around it, you know, because they didn't want the Water District responsibilities and other kind of stuff.
Yeah. It's always a complex thing when you're talking about development, particularly over decades, when you talk about starting at one place and winding up someplace else that's less desirable. It's a very complex situation. There's a lot of the main factors that are involved, I would imagine, you know, the county, the county does what the county can. Some county administrations have been better than others. But it's also, a lot of people try to go to unincorporated Harris County because they look at it and say, lower taxes, don't have to deal with the city, you know, they feel like it's a better situation. My parents did the same thing back in the late 80s, moved to an area near Umbel, but it was outside of Umbel. It was a great place to grow up. Today, I'm working on getting my parents out of there. And not single-family homes, but it's just, things change. We've seen it here. The area outside of Jersey Village around us can vary quite a bit, as we all know, as we travel around. There are probably some borders of the city you would rather not go anywhere near, and others you might feel a little bit more comfortable, but probably still not as comfortable as being inside Jersey Village. And what's the major difference?
Chief Riggs.
These guys back here who keep us safe, it, there are, and I'm not saying that's the only difference, you know, having a city government that has land use ordinances that can help to keep development from getting too sideways, we'll just say. I'm not saying it's an absolute solution, but it makes a difference, it can make a real difference. But these are the problems that city government is there to try to solve, and I'm not saying we always have the right answer, but trust me, it's something we want to make sure that we're on top of and trying to find the right answer. we want to make sure that we're on top of and trying to find the right solution towards. I think if we go into this saying, we think this is a good thing for the city, we recognize that there are going to be some challenges, let's look at it, and let's try to tackle those challenges. I think that's how we get to situations where we can start to make better things happen. If we run into, if we, if we start to dream big, but then allow the challenges to make us go, mm, well, maybe not, let's just play it safe. If you think you can just kind of keep this all static and, and keep it exactly the way it is, not doing anything, then that's not going to happen. It's, it's going to maybe more slowly backslide, but it will eventually backslide. I, I don't want Jersey Village looking like what we see just inside the Beltway. And I think that the best way that we can make progress towards preventing that, and maybe even helping Jersey Village to even get a little bit better than it is now, is to do the things that will make some of these areas around us even more attractive, raise the interest in the area, increase property values, get the redevelopment that we're seeing in some other areas. And then I think we can, at that point, see some progress on making sure that we don't backslide into what you described.
Yeah. Just a footnote, because I see we've reached eight o'clock, and we don't want to keep people all night. I appreciate the questions, and I think they, we'll, we'll be here as long as they can. Let's just appear as, as council and mayor, let's keep that in mind and try to answer, and if it's fully answered, we'll just move to the next question.
That'll work.
I agree, absolutely. First of all, thank you all for your time and your service. Nobody wants your position, but even though you go out there and you ask for it, you get it. Anyway, so I do have a question. Whenever we vet a company like KHJR to come and, and put this bid proposal together, what do you, as council and city, you know, officials, how do you vet them and what processes do you go through? And I want a short answer because I'm going somewhere, so.
I'm going to, instead of, instead of going up and down, I'm going to let, since Austin was the, the point person on that, I'll let him.
So, we researched what they've done in other cities, in Nevada, what they've worked on with a couple of projects in California, these people directly. All these people have come from histories in the private sector, CEO of companies, CEOs of companies, so they've all have a great background together. Once, when they joined forces and started working together, I reached out to the cities that they worked with, I talked with their city managers or the development director, whoever the appropriate person there was, and asked some pretty frank questions as to, you know, how did they do? Did they perform? Did they perform well? Did they perform on time?
Did you go see those locations, Austin?
No, I've not been out to Nevada or California, but I would, glad they go.
Have you been to 1203 Villamont, Suite 100 in Houston, Texas? That's listed on their packet that they sent us as a bid proposal?
No, I've, I've not, I've not been to their office.
It is not an address, it's not a real location. So it's hard for me, as a, and I'm not attacking you, this is honest, it's hard for me to say, this is a great deal, this is what we should spend our money on, when we're not even looking at, the address is listed, and one of them, the other one, I think is in a, a shipyard in California. So, again, I'm not attacking-
No, and I wasn't very interested in their offices, I was interested in the work they did for other cities.
I, again, I would hope that we go to their offices, right?
Kim, where's that listed? Where'd you get that?
Can you tell me that again?
Yeah, so what they have listed on the packet that they sent to the city is 1203 Villamont, which is V-I-L-L-A-M-O-N-T, Suite 100, Houston, Texas, 77077.
So I'm not familiar with that address, but the address in California, if I, it's been a while, because this is whenever we first started really talking about this development. My recollection was that, although it's, it is there along the sea line, but like a lot of places like that, that, that were originally industrial use, a lot of them have been redeveloped into office space, and so that, from, that's what I, what I recall from about a year or so ago, was what I found out. The Houston address, I'm not familiar with.
But this address in Houston is not even a real address.
It could very well be a typo. I know they, they have, they have not had a physical presence.
They're going to hang our city on a typo.
Well, are, are you willing to make a decision about somebody, despite the fact that we have a lot of other information that's substantive on a typo?
Would you, I'm just saying.
I'm more than happy to look into it. I will, I will ask them about that.
I just asked that you do that.
I will ask them about that. That is the first time I've ever seen anything with the, with a Houston address on it.
Mine's pulling up as a real address.
I don't think it tried.
On right off Carriage Hill and-
Do me a favor. Folks, I, just so that we're not, so, so, so let me, let me do this. Instead of, I don't know that we're going to have much progress here trying to parse this out while everyone else is waiting. Do me a favor, send me an email with that information, and I'll look into it and I'll get back to you.
All right, I appreciate it, Bob.
Yep.
Thank you.
Hi there. I've lived in Jersey Village since 2009, I've never been to one of these, so thanks for doing it. I live on Seattle, so my love for Jersey Village is a little lower than it was six weeks ago, but it'll get there. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you for your patience.
And while I was waiting, I had about four of my questions answered, so thanks for being in the firing line. You referenced, forgive me, I don't know your name. Michelle referenced that you and Austin had actually gone and seen some of the stadiums. So I'd be very, my question was going to be, had you done that? So I appreciate you doing that. The risk I see is that we do end up with whatever the gentleman called a white elephant, and certainly some of the lease options with the youth sports and all that make a lot of sense. But what was your experience? What did you, where did you go, and what did you see?
Great question. I'll be as quick as I can. I talked to city council, the mayor, and the owner of the stadium. I got a private tour. He opened his books, he answered every financial question I had about, how much did this cost? How much this cost? If you could do it again, what would you do differently? What were everything in the deal that was good? What was everything in the deal that you wish you got better? And I relayed my list of laborious questions to Austin when he went to Chicago and-
Milwaukee?
Milwaukee on family vacation.
Milwaukee.
I put that out there.
And, uh, he did the same thing.
Michelle, tell them where you went.
Yeah, where did you go?
Michelle, you didn't tell them where you went. I went to Cleburne, Texas.
Cleburne, Texas, it's near Fort Worth?
Right. And so I really, I wasn't really super, super keen on the idea of a stadium until I went. I think I had an idea of more of a MLB type of thing, and baseball's, I'm so, don't sue me, baseball is very boring to me, and I just, I'm, I'm really hard.
Hard, but that's okay.
I'm sorry, go Astros! But I had the best time because it is a mix of entertainment and baseball, like, it was just the best experience, and I loved it. It's a lot different when it's a smaller stadium of only 3,000 chairs versus, because everything's bottom row, right? There is no second, I mean, well, there's the VIP, but, okay, Austin, your turn.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I, I went and toured the Milwaukee Millman Stadium in Franklin, Wisconsin, suburb of Milwaukee. I also toured the Chicago Dog Stadium in Roseville or Rosemont, Illinois. Was able to meet with the owners of both teams, toured the stadiums, got to see everything. My wife, she's a saint, she let me do that on our family vacation. But we also got to take in a ballgame, and it was, there was not a bad seat in the place. For 17 bucks, you had seats right behind home plate, very family-friendly, very affordable. 17 bucks a ticket for great seats, and then, you know, hot dogs for two bucks and sodas. I mean, your kids can get all like cotton candy and ice cream, it was a lot of fun. But learned a lot, and learned a lot, you know, just asking the question, what would you do it, do differently, or what would you, what did you do wrong when you built this or developed this? And the one thing I took away is, the one owner said that their stadium was too big, had the 6,500 seats, so keeping it smaller. Had the chance to meet with the mayor of, of the city in Illinois, and added a few emails with the city administrator of Franklin, Wisconsin, just to hear their stories as well. So that's some of the other work we've done, I've done on that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right. Mike?
I have lots of pictures I'm happy to share if you would like to see them.
I had had an, I had had an alternate idea, which I'm not going to bring up because I don't want to crash the party, you know, I'm trying to think stadium stuff. You guys are talking maybe a smaller stadium, so I don't even know if this would be necessary, but I was thinking about like, and I know some people don't like this agency, I was thinking about TechDOT solutions. Like, with, with regard to the traffic question, could they, could they widen the lane? Could they have entrance-exit ramps? But then, we don't want to disrupt possible flow to surrounding businesses, and that could be a double-edged sword. This opens up a whole nother box. TechDOT, I believe, is a state agency, and they use state money that is paid through all our sales tax and everything. What could TechDOT do to possibly relieve or, you know, mitigate any traffic effects of this? And could we call them in as a reinforcement to somehow better the traffic situation? Sometimes you can have opposing lanes, like, when they're, when they're coming back, you know, southbound 290, could there be a lane that scoops around and goes to the game specifically, or an exit ramp that comes off and goes to it?
And obviously, yeah, these are all questions for a civil engineer to, to look at and figure out if it's possible, but that's, that's a conversation we could have with our state rep and see what, but I've, given the fact they just finished, or I don't know, is it even finished now? But it might be a little tough considering that they just completed that, but we-
Yeah, they did.
We can, obviously, we're going to look at, if, we're going to look at any number of potential solutions to try to ensure that, that the traffic issues there don't become compounded. Sorry, thanks. Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is Glenn Williamson.
Yes, sir.
I've lived here for 45 years. I think y'all are doing a great job.
Thank you.
And, uh, people get up here and talk about taxes. I've paid taxes out here for 40-something years. Y'all, when I first come out here, it was a good neighborhood for about 10 or 15 years. And it wasn't a bad neighborhood, but it just died. People getting old. And, uh, I think it's time to let the young people kind of, y'all are doing a good job. And the thing I want to ask about the football or the baseball stadium over there, can you tell me, like, I can't hear real well, so what you've been saying just goes right on through me, but, can you tell me how many acres that y'all got over there? How many acres is that ball field going to take up? And I've seen some stuff that the mayor has put on there about comparing these other teams across the United States that they've got. And it looks like about 4,000 people is what they're looking for here. So if you get it filled up, you're talking about 4,000 parking places.
Probably fewer.
Have y'all been filling, filling that in there? Are they going to do that?
So, the, the total land space is 43 acres. Remind me again, Austin, I don't know what the actual total space is that the stadium would-
Roughly six acres.
Okay, about six acres of the 42, 40, yeah. Keep in mind, I think that's also including parking, and I think that the parking would be considered potentially multi-use, but-
And, and who's going to be in charge of the parking? I'm sure it's going to be, have to pay to get in. Y'all going to money on that, or is it-
We obviously haven't gotten there yet. I know that we've looked at what some other stadiums have done, I believe they usually build it into the ticket price.
It varies, every stadium's a little bit different. Some you pay for parking, some it's a fee that's added to the tickets, it's, it's up to however we, we would do it and negotiate that with the team.
Yeah, that would be, that would be probably part of how the lease is, is negotiated. We haven't quite gotten to that point yet.
And the only other thing I was still kind of curious about, you know, like, y'all probably seen a lot more on this than we're seeing out here about, what are y'all doing for the people over there? I know you're doing a lot around Jersey Village here and everything like that, but parks and stuff like that. Or you got plans for something over there to set back like a park or anything? I know I saw some little park like that, but if it's a free park, maybe it's not going to do us any good. Of course, you got to have something over and everything.
Well, yeah.
You're talking about bringing in customers with this ballpark. I've seen a lot of ballparks that stay empty 90% of the time, so take that inaction.
Sure.
But I'm still for it, I'm a sports guy. I feel like if, if you stand and stare, you're not going nowhere. But it's like the golf course.
Yeah.
They stood on it, and where are we at now? About $6 million in the hole.
Sure.
If we build a thing, but it needs to be built, that's how the young people's going to get drawn in here. We're getting old, so don't do for us, do for them.
Well, and I think it's something for everyone, but I appreciate that. So to answer your question, I just want to make sure that we, we, we keep, this is something that's still, you know, a moving target as far as exactly how the, the parking is going to work out. As far as a park, I, I don't think, and keep in mind that the, right now what we have is kind of just a general layout that it's a proposal, we, we don't have a lot of definitive specifics on this, but I know that the developer's looking at some green space, but it would be green space not so much as a, a park per se, not in the sense that like Carol Fox Park is a park, but it would probably just be more green space that's tied into the overall development. So it would be part of the, the development, not something that the city would own, so.
And I saw in there where they, apparently what I've been reading, the, the ball teams is coming in here, everything, the group and everything, are they going to put the money to build this thing or City of Jersey Village? I think y'all are going to put in some money or something, but I don't know what it is.
So we, we would not be the ones building it, we would, there would be somebody who would be selected to build it, but again, that's, I would imagine, going to be part of the overall discussion on both the master development agreement, but particularly on the lease. Typically, teams like to be involved in that process since they're going to be the primary tenant. So we'll, hopefully we'll have more answers about that in the coming months.
And some of the things I've read, that the reason y'all are wanting this ball club supposedly draw people in.
Yes, yes, correct.
Have y'all got any estimate? I know what they're showing on their paperwork, would y'all really have any estimate around, not just Jersey Village, but this is going to be South Fair?
We, so there is a, and, and, and I appreciate all the questions, sir, I want to make sure that we get on to, while we're still running out of time, I want to make sure that we get on to everyone, to everyone else who has questions. We did a feasibility study that has a lot of that information, it's available on our city website, and, under the plans and study section, so if you, if you want to look at all of that information, it, it does contain a lot of the data about the market area, so. Thank you so much, I really appreciate all of your questions and-
And one more thing, I'd like to see y'all do something for Jersey Village people coming over there and everything. And I've seen, you know, baseball, stuff like that, what's wrong with building a, I've, I know I've seen y'all going to build a little baseball field or ball field or something over by the schools.
Well, I tell you what, we can discuss that. You, you get my mayor's newsletter every month with your utility bill, it's got my phone number at the top, you give me a call, and we can talk about that in more detail.
Just one last one.
Sir, I, I, I apologize, I've-
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get you to build a park over there to where you can play slow pitch fastball, I mean, slow pitch softball, and then baseball, put it all on the same field, put baseball and slow pitch softball, make them use baseball, I mean, bat, wooden bats, and you'll get more people because I've seen in the news all the time, people are asking, I've got a kid here, where can I take him to play ball and stuff like that? Then you get people coming over there, and then they're going to have the kids over there, and they're going to walk across the street when they get through because they, it's too late to eat supper, and they-
We can, we can look into that, but I, I, we're really running out of time, but give me a call, and we will, we will talk about all of that. Thank you, sir, I really appreciate it.
Mayor. Mayor.
James, mayor.
Oh, sorry, I'm-
God, good.
It sounded a little bit like Austin.
If we, Mark, if you'd indulge me for a second, Kim dropped a pretty large bomb there, and I should have brought my laptop, and so I did some research on my phone. The Villamont address is a typo. Did some significant research in through the different streets within 77077. It is 1203 Villamont, dropped the A, that's the street, it's correct house. You know, the lawyers in here are going to chuckle, because when I looked at setting up an LLC, and I looked at setting up businesses, the one thing you're never going to see is me set those up on delogee. I'm going to use a different address. So this is Chris K.'s own fault, but he used his personal house as the listing for his business instead of getting a different place of doing business. You know, there's so many different places you can use and rent an address, and he chose not to do that, used his personal house, and so it is a typo. The one, the address it defaults to, it corrects it to, comes back to the owner of KHJR.
I was also going to chime in and say, when I started my private practice, I had to list an address, and I was still searching for an office, and so- And so mine is also listed as my home address, as is the two nonprofits I started. Even if I have an office now, that's what it's listed as.
Okay, so...
Yes.
Well, I, let's, again, I, first of all, that information did not exist when we vetted them. There was no Houston address when we vetted them.
I think you're absolut...
It's on our website.
Yeah. And it, as it turns out, websites can change. And so what I'm saying is, this has been a process that's been ongoing for months now. And I'm telling you that we did not have that, that was not even on their website at that time. Now, if they put it on just recently, sorry, I haven't been checking on it regularly. But, well, we, mystery solved.
Thank you, James.
Thanks, Kim. So, Mark, go right ahead.
Obviously, anything we do has got a risk associated with any trade-off.
Get right up to the mic, Mark. If you speak right into the mic, it shouldn't be a problem.
Is this better?
You got to, you got to point it right at you.
How's this? Is this better?
That's better.
All right, what I was saying, regardless of what we do, we're going to have some risk associated with it. And the real question sort of becomes, how much risk do we want to take? And in my previous life, I had an opportunity to retain a risk expert at a very healthy price. And in discussing risk and thinking about it and approaching with others, we used to use terms like, it's good, it's got a real good chance, strong, it's got a strong chance, high chance of success on this project. And so we went around the room, and everybody wrote down their probability when we used the word good, a good chance. The numeric probabilities ranged from forty to ninety-five percent. And so what that, what the point was in evaluating risk, we ought to force ourselves individually for our own clarity in communicating, is to put some numeric probability on what our chance for success is. Now, in this scenario, there's two probabilities that I would hope each city council member, city manager, and mayor to have. The first one is, for this project, given where we sit, what level of risk are we willing to tolerate for this project? In my mind, I would be guessing it would be someplace, given that we're in a good position, someplace between seventy-five and ninety-five percent chance. Meaning, if the probability, when we review all the individual data, doesn't at least give us a seventy-five, eighty, and my, if I was doing it, like eighty-five, ninety percent chance, then we don't go forward. And I have no idea of, for city council or the panel, how much risk we think we should tolerate. Now, the second risk number is the risk number that each city council member and mayor should have when they make the decision to pull the trigger. You don't have that kind of data right now. You'd have to have all the things in. And so I would ask, not, I don't want to put you on the spot at this ten seconds, but I would, I would really like to know what, of each of you, how much risk, how, how strong a probability do you think you should have before you guys pull the trigger on this project? And then before, when you do prove the trigger, where is that numeric probability at?
I think, I think we've got the question here. Why don't we, does anyone want to respond to that? I mean, I've got a general thought on it, but...
I hate to go into details on this question, but risk of success of the project, is the whole risk of the city losing money, risk of a white elephant? Can you be more specific in that?
Well, to me, given you have an alternative, okay, which, which is, the current use, for instance, is warehouses, which we're trying to avoid, but recognize, that's fairly low risk to any sort of crime rate, doesn't add, you know, a huge amount. Single-family homes, very low risk to our most treasured asset in this community. On the other hand, and my biggest concern is the long-term viability of the project. And that includes whatever components we have. If it's, I mean, obviously, I'm a little scared about bringing a bunch of apartments in, but the stadium, what is, on the overall project, when it's totally scoped out, what is our probability on the long-term success of that project? Not the first two years when the developer's flipping it. And so what level of risk of that do you think we should have before we, before we decide to go? And then when we're ready to go, what probabilities did you come up with? I mean, it'd be great if our, if our minimum was seventy-five or eighty, and you guys said, we got a ninety percent chance, given this data, given this developer, given this set of factors. And also keeping in clarity of what the real goal is, given our great position here, is to not put the family and the crime rate at risk in our community.
Yeah. Let me just, and I apologize, I'm going to try not to jump the gun from everyone else.
I'll still listen, I'll sit down.
Sure, sure, sure. Thank you, Mark. I agree with you that the question is a good one, generally in terms of what tolerance does the city council have for risk? And what, at what point do we say, this is too risky for us to, to move forward? That's generally been the discussion. Now, the idea of putting a number to it, I think, is a mistake. And it's not because, not because I think that, that a, that, that, numbers are good because they're, they tend to be objective if they're based on other objective data. If you are asking me to make a subjective evaluation for a question that I can't answer definitively, or at least with some reasonable certainty, then it becomes hard, because you also asked, what's the risk of success or risk of failure? And that's a very, very broad question that depends on many different questions. I, we do, so just as an example, and I'm, just very quickly, when we talk about financial risk in my, in my line of business, we never use numbers for the risk. We do, there are numbers, obviously, everywhere, when you're talking about balance sheets and income statements and, and controls. But risks are usually, when you talk about risk involved, because obviously with financial risk, as anyone who followed in Ron knows, financial risk is a big thing, it's always high, medium, low, because you're dealing not with the numbers, but you're dealing with the risk that is inherent with how people interact with the numbers and behavior of people and things of that nature. So, and, and I understand, you may disagree. Why don't we do this, just because...
Let me just make just one point, Bobby, and then I'll be real...
Okay, just very, very quickly, because we are, we could suck a lot of time out of the room.
The attorneys in this room will agree. I regularly and others will come up with case evaluations and what the probabilities. And you want to talk about probabilities.
Sure.
And based upon my numeric probability, the company hits two, three million dollars in earnings right then.
So you're talking like actuarial work.
So it's, 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 it is numeric, and it's the only way you can really communicate with clarity. I'm sorry.
Sure, sure. I, I think if, I don't know how much actuarial work goes into a question of, is a, a large development going to fail or succeed? There may be actuarial, I mean, to some degree, there might be. But usually, your actuarial work is, what's the chance this place is going to catch on fire? What's the chances that there's going to be more than X percentage of a building destroyed?
I think we got this point.
Yeah. So that's, that was my concern. But we can have more of a discussion about that. I think just generally, we are trying to minimize this risk as much as possible. And I would imagine there are six different people up here. You would get six different answers, generally regarding how much risk that we're willing to accept. So I, unless anyone else has anything to add to that? Nope? Okay. We can discuss offline further if you want, yeah.
I live on the Acapulco. In fact, we're neighbors of Michelle. We've lived, and my wife and I have lived here for thirty years, raised three kids. We're very proud to be Jersey Village residents, and brag about it to everybody I meet. First of all, I think nobody's addressed the issue. We have a great baseball team in the city already, the Astros. And I would rather go to an Astros game than go to a local minor league team. I think also the stadium is going to bring more problems for law enforcement. You're going to have to hire more people. I think to do the retail, the dining is the best alternative. And I hope you would bring this up to a vote for the residents and citizens to vote on before you make your final decision. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
During budget, city council, city staff have been looking at the fact that we know we're going to have a development over there, not necessarily a stadium, but we know that something will happen over there. And we have been increasing law enforcement levels in anticipation of that because it needs to be a slow and gradual increase and not a sudden increase.
I will be less than the predecessors, but I have a statement, and I have some questions. My statement, I personally, as someone who's been an office manager, who's had to deal with correct addresses, things like that, think it's pretty shoddy work that they can't even have stationary with their correct address, and we're going to just give them a multimillion-dollar project, and if it's their house, they didn't even recognize that their house was spelled wrong. How many times have I spelled Lakeview wrong? Zero. So I just think it's pretty shoddy.
I do foot delogee.
And I asked every one of you, including Austin, what due diligence you did with this company, and only two of you said you did due diligence plus Austin. So maybe a little more due diligence should be done if they can't even get their address right on their public stationary that you have been promoting on our website. So that's my soapbox. My question, what are you looking for in the ownership of the team? Like, what qualities? You said you had several people. So what are, what is your holdup from announcing a winner, picking a winner? What are you looking for? And what is the ultimate cost the taxpayers have to pay to make this happen? If it's zero, and this is all just about future costs, then that's the answer. If it's thirty million dollars to build it, that's the answer. And then lastly, when you move city hall over there, is this still going to be here for city council? Or we're going to have to fight all that traffic to go to your city hall meetings or town halls or things like that? And I had something else. I lost it in line, but I guess it doesn't matter. So there, I like my answers.
Okay. So on the, and I apologize, I, obviously, if you forgot your question, I forgot yours also.
Well, my first was a statement about your bad, you know, vetting. My second was, what are your...
Let's go one at a time.
I think it was owner of the baseball team, like, how are we picking the owner? We don't get to pick.
So we are going to put all of our eggs in a stranger's basket?
No. We'd be able to, the council will have the ultimate authority as to who the council wants to sign a lease with on a team owner-operator. So the American Association of Professional Baseball League, they vet all potential owners very thoroughly. They look at all their financials, their business records, everything. That's a very in-depth process because they don't want just any Joe Schmo trying to put a team up. They want high-quality baseball with high-quality owners.
They should vet the developer so they get a high-quality stadium.
Well, the development is a little bit different than the team ownership. But that's, that's how that works, then the city council will have the ultimate authority to vote on the lease for the team with the stadium.
So if they say, no, they don't want this person that the American League has picked, then we're dead in the water? Or will they give us like A, B, and C?
Any of the four team owners that are interested right now, the, the league is aware of them and knows them, and the league does not anticipate any problems with any of the four ownership groups.
I don't feel like you answered my question. Like, if they present somebody and we, as the city council, say...
Who is "they"? When you say "they" present somebody?
The American League.
They give us four potential team ownerships?
They give us four, A, B, C, D.
Yeah.
There are currently four teams.
And we say, none of them.
Then, then we don't have, then we won't build a stadium.
But so we have to pick from these four?
If we want...
So I guess, what are you looking for in these four?
The problem is, it all depends. It depends on, is a stadium a sure thing, that we're going to do a stadium no matter what? That's not a sure thing. Is it a sure thing that it's going to be an American Association of Baseball League team that goes in there? That's not a sure thing. Those two things are what are currently in play. Is it going to be one of those four teams? We don't know, but there's, you have to kind of get to a point where we actually have a situation like that, where then we have to have a discussion about how to move forward. It would be a mistake if we sat here and said, right now, only based on the information we have now, that if we do this, and then that doesn't happen, then we're going to do this, and if that doesn't happen, then we're going to do this. Instead, what we try to do is, based on the information we have in front of us, based on the scenarios that exist now, keeping in mind that in some instances, we have discussed contingency plans. But the point being, it hasn't been, it hasn't gone so far down the line on team ownership because there hasn't been a need. There's, there's nothing to really guard against in that regard. But obviously, those are things that are going to have to happen before we tie our hands and say we're moving forward for sure with a baseball stadium.
So if you move forward, what will that cost the taxpayers out of our taxed money? Or our general fund?
With the way it's structured right now, zero.
Zero.
If you're talking about the current taxpayers, zero. If you're talking about the taxpayers that are not there right now, that will be there, that's different.
Talking about the citizens that have paid into this bucket, it'll cost us nothing.
Yes. What they're looking at is the cost of the stadium, cost of all this.
So we're only worried about the future implications of, to the city, not losing our bottom line at all.
So when we're talking about risk, these are exactly the kind of discussions we're having, and structuring the deal in order to ensure that taxpayer dollars here don't go over there to fund it.
What was my third question?
You asked if we would still keep city hall? The answer was yes. I think we agreed that we would revamp this in some capacity, and meetings would still be over on the side. But that decision hasn't been finalized. It's just been...
So if the stadium is not done, is the deal with KHJR done? Or are they still willing to do it without the stadium?
Are you asking if KHJR is a requirement for any development over there? Are you asking if they're a requirement just for the stadium?
I'm asking if the stadium is a requirement for that development to go, for them to buy the land and develop it out.
I mean, they have not said that. They believe that that's the, the best option right now, but it's not the only option, no.
They've even proposed other ideas.
Yeah.
I don't know that the stadium is, can, is a deal breaker for them. They, they would do other things. They'd be happy to turn it all into apartments, like I said. But they proposed that same health and wellness building that they had had before. They proposed some things similar to that.
Okay, thank you.
I think this project has come forward as the best option that they've provided.
Mark?
The question is, is, you know, do you guys trust the citizens of JV to make decisions on large expenditures of their money?
Yes.
And the reason I'm asking that is because you had considered last year, before you approved the budget, to consider a twenty million dollar bond, and then you decided to reduce it to ten million and have that specifically to where it would be spent to build a new golf course clubhouse and event center.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? But then you decided not to do that, to go and do the bond, to let the citizens vote to make the decision if they wanted to spend the money.
Mark, is this, I'll let you continue, but I just want to ask if, is this circling back to the stadium?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Because what ends up happening is, they didn't get the chance to make a decision on spending the money. Okay? You guys already had accumulated the money to be able to do the project without asking them to endet themselves. So then you now are going ahead with the project to do the golf course clubhouse and event center. And it originally started out as a renovation to the existing clubhouse, and then it went to building a new clubhouse, and that was going to be 1.3 million dollars.
Mark, I don't think all that details necessarily for the baseball stadium.
So anyway, so what ends up happening is, it has now escalated from building a new golf course clubhouse at 1.3 million dollars to building a golf course clubhouse and event center for 8.65 million dollars. So now where I'm going with that is, when you take and you make this agreement with this developer on the other side of 290, you're going to sell that property to them for 8.3 million dollars, and you're going to have 8.3 million dollars that you receive from them, and then you will have the money to take and build your new city hall over there without asking the citizens their approval to spend the money to do that.
Because we won't take out debt. Thank you, Mark. Yes, sir.
Okay. My name's Kenneth Williamson. I've lived here for over forty-four years. First question, what's the area zoned for right now?
It is currently a, it's, it's not a used base zone, it is a form-based zone. So it's not a, it's not, it's not, it's not like Zone A where it's residential.
Okay, so anything can be built there?
It would be mixed, mixed-use development.
My question is, if we sell it to this developer, is it going to be zoned?
Yes.
For certain things?
Well, I mean, it will, they haven't asked us to change the form-based zone, so it would retain the form-based zone. We may, there may...
That's, that's the problem.
That's, that's the problem. So when they buy it and we don't get a baseball team to make a stadium, they can put whatever they want there?
No.
So it has to be zoned?
So I want to make sure that we're clear. When you say zoned, there's-
What kind of, what, what kind of businesses are going to be put over there? Can they put up parking lot like he's saying? Or can they just put up low housing apartments? This is what I'm asking, you know?
Sure. So there's, there's a difference between, and, and anybody feel free to jump in on this if they want, but the short version of that answer is, most of these districts in our city are used-based zones. In other words, they say, there's usually a little bit more detail, but they usually say the following are permissible purposes for this area. That's not quite the same over there, but that's not to say that, that any use can be, can be made there. Instead, what it is, is it generally sets out uses, but then it also talks about things like the design of buildings, signage, the way in which streets should be developed, walkability, a lot of those other things. Yeah. So, so, so they can't just put anything they want in there.
Okay. So if we don't get the stadium, I mean, I'd like to see the stadium show up because I think that will bring restaurants, maybe some nice hotels and stuff like that over there and bring more people in. Okay? Another question is, this city, when I moved in here, was very small. And he's not here now, or he's right there in the back. I fought fire for this city when I was 16 years old. We ran out of a little building right here on the side. And this city's grown a lot bigger. We still have the same fire station. Now, yes, it's not, not the same.
Not the same one back then. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's been bigger, yes. But it's the same location.
Yeah.
Okay?
Well, yeah.
You're looking at response times for 7,000 people in a stadium.
4,000.
Or 4,000. Well, okay. And then talk about all the people at the restaurants and everything around there. Okay? You're running out of the same station?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I-
What's going to happen to the people way on the other side of this city when there's an accident on, or somebody having a heart attack or gets shot over by the baseball field? What's going to happen to the other people over here? Why aren't we building fire stations that cover the area to make the response time smaller? The chief, now his people are mobile. That's, I understand that. You can run it out of one location.
Sure.
But the fire station, no, you can't.
James, I'm going to let you field this one.
Yeah.
This is more in your-
It's right at my wheelhouse. So the fire station in Jersey makes total sense. Been there a long time, covers the neighborhood quite well. Fire station response, it sounds like you may know already, is based on ISO standards and time. We now run two, two ambulances out of that station.
So why can't we build another fire station somewhere else to make the response time even smaller to help this man on the other side of the city when he has this heart attack?
That will eventually have to happen if it continues to develop.
But we're going to spend money all these other places.
Right now, Jersey Village already covers all the fire nameless response on that side of 290, all the way down tailored harms.
We always have.
Always have. As the call volume increases, we will have to look at a station too for ISO standards. We just made those adjustments. Well, when the far reaches of Argentina, Cypher Fire Department, when you were around, they had a ladder truck right here off of West Road. That truck's gone. It doesn't exist anymore. So we don't have a ladder truck for that area of the city based on ISO standards. There's one around the corner on Fallbrook. There's the one that they moved.
Keep on looking for other people to take care of our city.
So that's why the city-
Why aren't we taking care of ourselves?
Well, that's what I'm trying to talk about. We, we bought a ladder truck and it's being built. And because the ISO standard requires that we have one because our mutual aid partners can't provide that anymore. And so we bought it. If the call volume increases, if we need to provide a second station, we'll provide a second station. It's going to be over there. What I want everyone in this room to hear is the, the Jersey Drive Fire Station's not going anywhere when I say that because that rumor keeps getting started and that station's not going anywhere. If the call volume increases and you need to provide a second one, we can put another one on the other side of 290.
But I will say this-
But all that's going to be dictated by national standards.
I will say this. The, the priority of this council has been, since the first day I joined it, police and fire come first and flooding is a close second. If I thought for a minute that any of this was going to in any ways harm that or change that, then I would be adamantly opposed to it. We've given the, we've given the police department and the fire department, ever, ever since I've been on council, every single thing they've ever requested.
Well, could that be something you can pull up in the negotiations with the people buying that property to build a fire station over for Jersey Village?
Sure. I, I, I rely on, the reason why we have a-
Enough up to them.
And, and, and again, these are, these are details that can all be fleshed out, but I, I am going to rely on the expertise of our very capable fire chief, very capable police chief, and use their decades of professional judgment to discuss and develop whatever plan is necessary for us to be able to provide the best possible service for our citizens. And we're going to do that, period. Full stop. That will be the top priority. And if anything else in terms of the way the development's done, or anything has to be curtailed in order to ensure that that top priority is done, we will do it. So.
Eric Nau, Jersey Village, living here for two years. I think my wife and I have been to just about every single city council, so every month. And during that time, I have seen many of the people here at city council, city manager, police, and fire. They have all demonstrated excellent thoroughness and resourcefulness and have always put the city first, without a doubt. That is always in each and every one of their minds. So thank you very much for that and having this, this open forum. I have four pretty quick questions. They may be redundant, but they do, they are kind of short. So last time we had this open forum, someone had mentioned a pollution issue while, Bobby, I think you had said that there was another study that had been done that said that the area was clear. Someone said, I'm going to provide you with some information that says otherwise. Was that ever done and was there anything eye-opening about it?
I'm going to try to make a very concise, quick response for you. That person was contacted multiple times. Appointments were attempted to be set up and no information was ever provided, even though the city made multiple efforts to try to obtain that information. We did a phase one and it came up with nothing.
Got it. Excellent.
It's been going all along with that.
Multiple attempts, and it was not dropped that last time. I talked to her almost six to eight months ago and I've tried to get the information. It's never been provided.
So the, the other thing is, I think Michelle alluded at it, is it sounds like with the building, excuse me, the KHJR and the agreement and the building of the stadium, there's not a current part of that discussion, including moving City Hall and building a new building over there right now? Or is that part of it?
So there is a municipal building over there. What functions would stay here versus what functions would go over there has not been decided.
Got it. And then who is putting the money up to build the stadium?
KHJR.
Okay. And then lastly, so once the stadium is built and the, and the civic building has been built and that's all done, as you had said, there was six acres that require for this current project to be used, and there's 43. I don't expect them to build it out to the lot line, but that remaining acreage or further plans, will they be, will they be started by KJ, KJHR after the building of the stadium? Are they sort of ongoing at this point? Is there any other talk about that? Will there be sort of Jersey Village involvement or feedback in from you guys or us at that time? What's that sort of, what's the, what's the, what's, what's going on with that?
So, and, and let me just actually kind of backtrack a little bit to make sure that that, that, that my statement about the building of the stadium wasn't, isn't taken too terribly literally. They, they will be responsible for ensuring that it's built. Firms like KHJR typically are primarily sort of in the business of architect, you know, basically architectural work, design work, layout, project management. Typically, the actual construction gets subcontracted out to other entities. So that's, that's a, a big distinction. So I don't want anyone to take the idea that they would literally be the ones building the stadium at face value. As far as the rest, the details, I, you know, obviously, the rest of that is all going to be a private development. They're going to be buying the land, you know, other than the fact that they have to, there's going to be conditions to meet incentives and that they have to follow the zoning rules. And obviously, there'll be, there'll be conditions of the master development agreement. Apart from that, it's going to be a private development.
So, so once, so once the stadium deal is done, and let's say this stadium's built, KJHR will have rights of the rest of the property, and then they will probably then invite other new developers to come in and say, hey, I want to build a restaurant, and then-
I don't think it's, I don't think the stadium's going to be first. I think it's kind of an ongoing-
So the entire-
So other things could be built before, during, after.
So it's all going to be kind of one more or less one fell swoop. It's not like one, the stadium, and then a year later, and maybe a, a strip mall, and then a year later, like the apartments or-
It could, I think, I honestly think it could be. I also don't think that it necessarily would be in that order. So I think there's potential-
It's not like it's going to be three or four years between projects.
It could be.
Well, there are sta, there are other stages that they're looking at, but as far as like some of the core pieces, like the stadium and some of the, the retail, my understanding, and keep in mind again, we're kind of still in a-
Right, right.
I thought multifamily was, would be typically, typically would be first.
That might be right.
Before stadium, and then, then it was possible, then other stuff was possible.
Yeah. Might, but at least based on the time, the, the very rough ranges that they've given us, it wouldn't be four, three to four years between each of those. It may be three to four years total for the, for the, the entire-
Okay. Thank you for answering my questions. That was everything.
Yeah. They have said that there will be some pieces that might come a little bit later.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did, your second question was who's putting the money up for the stadium, right? And that was answered KHJR?
That, yeah, that's what-
Well, I guess technically, yes.
Okay. So-
More or less.
So technically, that's correct, but I want to make sure that we've, we share full, transparent with this, is that's the way everything's written today. There has been talk, and there is a possibility of the LGC pulling debt and paying for the now and then getting paid back for it. The LGC provides insulation from the city and it doesn't put everybody else at risk.
Got it. Thank you.
That's still being evaluated. Yeah.
And my comment about this place was just, would it be torn down or could meetings still exist here? And I was saying that that was a possibility. I know we've discussed about City Hall being built in various places in Jersey Village, and it's not out of the discussion for it to go across the street either. However, even if it did, we would maintain-
Yeah. We've had, we've had discussions about what it would take in order to make this part of, of City Hall a standalone thing because it is, it would take a little bit of work as far as electrical and all of that. But, but that has been discussed. We, we would also have to look to see, you know, if you get in here and start really looking at the structure, you know, what condition is it in? So. So I think this is a good general stopping point, but before we do that, I thought I wanted to just go around and, and ensure that members of council had an opportunity to provide their last thoughts on this. So, Drew, why don't you start on your end?
Yeah. I am still, still collecting data. I've talked with various and sundry people that, that followed up on Austin's comments. So I contacted the two cities where KHJR is. I've talked to the West Houston Development Associate, or West Houston Association, which is developers. I happen to know some of the board members there, and they, probably as developers would, they endorse this idea. And they thought, they, they, they showed me potential that I hadn't even considered and said, if you do this, hey, we could do this and this, and that, that got me excited. I think that, to, to what Mark was saying, I am, I, I am, there are risks. I think my goal is to make them as few as possible. As this council has proven time and time again, we're very fiscally conservative. We can't control the unknowns. We can anticipate those, and I think whenever we do lineups of how much tax dollars are coming in, we're very conservative in that. Right? And, and so that, that seems to be the case in this. So I'm, I'm for this and I'm actually for the stadium, but that's only if we get a team. Looks like that. I'm only, I'm, to answer, ask this question from earlier. One of my criteria for an owner is that they, I would like them, you don't get always what you choose, but I'd like them to be reputable. I'd like them to have experience in this. I'd like them, if at all possibility, more local than not. All those have different weights and different criteria, and you got to look at the total package. But I probably would veto me as an owner. Right? So they have to have the cash flow and the staying power as well because there might be lean years, and the first sign of lean, leanness, I don't want them to bug out. So in the interest of time, I'm going to quit talking, but I make myself available via email, phone, and after this meeting. So thank you all for coming out and, and giving us your time.
Jerry?
I wish I had a magic eight ball that would tell us exactly what's going to happen so that we can, you know, make that type of informed decision. But we don't, unfortunately. If we had known two and a half, three years ago that we were going to be in the midst of a global pandemic and that inflation was going to skyrocket and supply issues were going to cause the costs of, you know, materials and supplies to double, triple, quadruple, I think we would have made some different decisions back then on when to start projects and, and what types of projects we would have taken. So, you know, we do appreciate the information and the feedback and the input that you're giving us so that we, you know, can make as informed a decision as, as we possibly can. You know, I, and like Jennifer, I still don't have 100% decision. I am, I'm leaving, leaning towards the stadium because I, I see the, the positive outcomes and the benefits longer term as far as, you know, there's 43 acres that we currently own, but there's hundreds of acres that are in that area that are currently undeveloped that I think this could potentially spark that economic development that would then benefit us because we would then offset our property taxes with property taxes from over there and sales tax from over there. So, I mean, the vision is, and the reason why we're all discussing this, is to help reduce that tax base on, on all of us. And, and the only way to do that because of the limited space, the land that we have at the moment, and the fact that we're landlocked, we don't have much further to go. This is, this is, you know, probably one of the better options for us to, to think about and to, and to discuss. So I appreciate all of you coming out tonight.
I'll be, I'll be brief. Said before, I'm, I'm really torn on this and it depends on day-to-day how I feel. I'll be really honest. There's some days I'm like, yep, we need to do this. And there's other days I'm like, whose idea was this? And, I mean, and proof of that is even, my husband came and asked a question tonight because he didn't like the answers I've been giving him at home. And he did. He came up here and I said, and by the way, he got the exact same answer. So I will, I will say this. You know, the, the easiest thing in the world would be to just sell the land and let it be tilt-wall industrial. Absolutely. Hands down. Easiest. That would be the easiest option. That's the easiest option. That, that makes a lot of money. And that is a, that's a, that's a, that is, that's a good choice. Doesn't mean that that's the best choice. It also doesn't necessarily mean, I mean, that doesn't fall in line at all with the comprehensive plan. And that's something I also think we need to consider. I, and so, and so I think that's something that's important. And that's something I have to remind myself frequently as though, like, this might not necessarily be what I would do on my own with my own money. I'm very risk averse. But at the same time, I also understand the fact that a large majority of the citizens want something different over there instead of the tilt-wall. So I get that. That being said, I also think there's something to, something that we need to, things we need to consider. I think it's important to make sure that the city is getting, if, if this is what moves forward, that the city is getting the best deal possible with the, you know, that we're the benefit here. We're not, I'm not thankful to any developer that has interest in this. Developers have no, developers are not our friends. You know? I mean, they, we, we all have a mutual end game, but I, I think, think the city needs to end up on the positive end of this as much as possible. And, you know, it's our land. It's our choice. And it's what, going to be what we need to do and what's going to be best for the city. So that's how I feel about it. And again, I'm more than happy to share my opinions. I'm happy to talk to people. Please let me know.
Very well said. Michelle?
Thanks, everybody, for coming out. I think all the questions were valid, and it's interesting to hear just the feedback this way or that way. I think it gives us some talking points when we, you know, have discussions. I'm really excited to get to the next step to where we can nail down what type of operator, if this stadium is going to work. And then all of the things and suggestions you brought up to see what details they give. I will say I do plan on, once we get more itemized things, visiting the other stadiums again to compare notes of this is what they're offering. What do you think? I've still been in contact via phone to the people that I visited. I'm not sure if you have. I'm not sure if you have. But I, I continue to keep them in the loop because they have nothing to gain from me doing the same thing as, as, you know, I'm just somebody else who, another city that's doing the same journey as them. So I feel like they're very honest and open with anything that's good, bad, or indifferent. So that's my promise that I, I'm going to make is just to keep analyzing it and as close to apples and apples as I, as I can, even if that means flying, flying up to Chicago.
I appreciate everybody that came out and the questions. I agree with others. It's very helpful information. It's good to see and hear what you're concerned about. Brings up things that we hadn't caught before, like an address. So I appreciate, I'm very sad that ownership hadn't been picked and wasn't here like we had hoped. Think that pretty much leaves us in the same place we were the last time we had this meeting, but we'll see what comes.
We had one potential owner here, but I didn't want to call him out without the others here. He, he was very interested to come and see, to see how things were going.
I'm sure it was very enlightening for him.
Hey, you know what? If we didn't scare him off after that, then I think he's all right. So I, the, the thing that I want to make sure that's clear, because I, I got a remark after the last town hall, that someone thought that I was all in on this and that I was 100% gung ho about it. I wanted to kind of clarify and make sure that, that, that that's not, you know, that's not necessarily true. If, if you see me sort of going back and forth and discussing a point, the reason I do that is because, and, and trust me, I have been here many a times. Actually, I think Councilmember McCray's expression of feeling about like, based on the day, it may be, hey, this sounds like a great idea. And other times it may be, holy crap, what are we doing? Kind of thing. It, it's, it's, trust me, I've been there. Austin Blaze can tell you, I've been there. Everyone on this council has seen me.
We plotted to kill it in your kitchen. We did. We talked about how we were going to...
Literally, literally, through this process, it has been back and forth, back and forth. And it's not because of indecision or just, you know, flying wherever the wind may blow. It's because this is a very complex thing to try to work through. It's something where we're constantly getting, I mean, information and process and things change on a regular basis. There are things I hear that, that, you know, when I hear them, they may make me worry. There are things I hear that might get me excited about things. At the end of the day, this is all a process. However, what I want to try to, and, and trust me, I'm, I'm no better than anyone else on this front, but there's always an inclination when things look complicated or difficult or risky potentially, to just want to say, you know what? I don't want any piece of it. Just, this is too complicated. Let's just, let's just go do something else. I understand that feeling. But I, I think that instead, it's, it's always a good idea to sit back and say, what are the risks? What are the challenges? Are they ones that can be reasonably mitigated? Are they challenges that can be met? We still have a lot of discussions to have about those challenges. We've had, you know, certainly where we are now is as a result of that conversation. And, and I, I think that it's also important for citizens when they come forward and say, "I have a concern about XYZ." You know, I want to talk about it and kind of say, well, how do we resolve that? How do we mitigate that? Rather than just simply say, "You're right. This is a bad idea. Let's give up on it." Because a lot of big ideas have those same problems, those same challenges. But if we're willing to buckle down and look at them and study them and make an informed decision, which doesn't just happen like that, I think that we're either going to meet those challenges and do something really big that this whole city will benefit from for decades, or we're going to say, you know what? We tried, but we just could not make it work despite the fact that we gave it every effort we could. Either way, I think it's a positive result. But, but we have to go through that process. So I would just ask all of you, if you have concerns, you're not alone. If you have questions, you're not alone. If, 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 if you have deep seated worries, you're not alone.